Oh yeah.
Are we not this?
Is it on?
It's supposed to be on button.
I could have done that.
You think that's working?
Yes.
All right. We're now opening the meeting at six oh two AM. First order of business, we're going to introduce each other on one another. So Ed, Al.
Alan Lima.
Ed Adams.
Ken Moser.
And Keith Moore's chair, all present of the meeting. So we are, we do have an agenda, I mean a forum, excuse me, forum, and we will be able to receive. First order of business, we had a chance to review the minutes of last week's, last month's meeting regarding, most of it, we've been all on the site plan application Patriot holds. And then they're taking a motion to, here. So find anybody.
I make a motion to approve the last week's or second grade.
A second then?
You have a motion in a second, you have any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? So moved. So first on the agenda, the applicants aren't here, we're going to hold off on the public hearing. I think that would be the best thing to do. So we'll move down to the item three point two amended site plan application CW Ames Inc. Represented by, well, tonight will be a representative J. K. L. Lanzervane. I'm assuming that person is here.
Obviously he is.
And if you want to go ahead and present what you have for us.
Alright.
You should all have.
Yeah, they were all here.
So we're having that phone there. So what's happening is.
You stand that side.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you look at the platform that's in front of you.
We all have these, so we're all set.
So what's happening to this subdivision is that they're creating lot four B. And the goal of this is that C. Ames wants to retain the Mollone Lot there. And he wants to sell all of lot four, and that is the goal of this. Also, what's happening in the subdivision is that the road is being extended. And it's having the hammerhead turnaround put in there that meets the road standards. And plus, it's made the minimum two hundred foot standards for frontage.
So the thing looks to me that setbacks and frontage and acreage are all covered for lot four B. Is that correct?
So is this a recommended, this is a total two subdivide?
It's, it's, it's an, it is a existing subdivision approved.
Okay.
Although it was amending, although it's happening and being amended for lot four B. Four B did not exist. They tell, they tell us to tell you either approve or decline it.
Okay. Okay. The road being extended in, what was that, it needs to let the two hundred?
Well, what's, what's happening is for a lot to be legal, it needs to have two hundred feet of frontage, which this lot has more than ample enough two hundred feet. And then also implementing that hammerhead turnaround at the end, so.
So that's two hundred feet for lot four A, or four B.
Four B, yeah.
For four B, okay, I see, that's why the road is kind of.
Just have one question?
Yep.
For the question.
Your name, please?
Sidney Jackson.
Sidney?
Yep, S. I. D. N. Y.
Thank you very much.
Just waiting for the button. He's also selling that land and this land altogether. Think that has anything to do with it.
Does that have any questions? No, I think I understand what they want, just add it a lot to the existing area.
So the original was approved in two thousand seven. And it was amended again in two thousand eleven for this sixty foot right away along lot two. And so this is the second amendment to the original by adding lot four B.
It'll be two acres, right?
What's that?
Two point seven one, is it a minimal of two acres?
Minimum of two, with the road frontage a minimum also of two hundred.
So it means those requirements?
Yeah, if you see the notes, number five has those standards right in it. And that dash, that dash line you're seeing within the parcel is actually the setback buffer for the buildable area. That's really easy for me, makes it easier for me to issue a permit on it.
Yeah.
I think you just shut off.
Yeah, wifi connecting, or Bluetooth's not working properly.
So I have to abstain, since I have an interest in this work. So you guys would be the three. I can still run the meeting, I just can't vote.
You can't vote on this, I got you. Does this mean make a motion to accept, is that what it is?
Yeah, we're done with, satisfied with all of our questions.
Yeah. I don't have any more, do you have any more?
Kingston, was there anything that you would notice running?
No, these, these subdivision amendments are fairly straightforward because it's coming from an existing lot that was in the subdivision. Makes it a de minimis change, so it, these are ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're fairly straightforward, and they're improving it with the hammerhead, so it's also a loss.
All right, I make a motion to accept this amendment.
Yeah.
All right, and all in favor?
So moved? Thank you, Sidney.
Signing, we might as well get that out of the way.
Sure, you guys must sign, I don't think I can sign.
No, you can't, you didn't vote.
I'm not lucky, we paper quicker, I mean, they would have known for it.
If you could sign.
How we're signing this?
On both of them.
Okay.
I like to have copies.
You want us to sign the law of copy?
No, no.
Or both copies of this?
One of those will be recorded at the registry, and one will stay here.
Was there three?
I think there's the two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's fine, we just will have one here, and you can take one and record, we don't have to do the mylar anymore, so.
You've got the letter ready. So, on the public, are we doing the public hearing first? Do we open up for the public hearing?
The letter I put in your.
Pardon?
Yeah, she gave you the letter, we got a letter directly sent to us for the financial.
I have it.
Yeah, you should, yeah.
Okay, that's in her.
No, just you.
He'll probably have something to say about.
Are they suspending the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we'll do that here shortly. Do the signatures.
All right. Next on the agenda, so what we did bumped.
Yeah, we're getting on time, website and butter, the agenda's set inside.
Yeah, right, right. Good surprise.
Oh, we got here.
So.
We have to, I think we have to close and then open, close regularly.
Okay, we're going to close, we're going to temporarily suspend the meeting for now, and open up for the public.
Yeah, yes, just so.
Why have the motion to close?
Well, it opens.
Self-storage.
Make a motion to close. And seconded in.
The great Scott.
You said to open the public hearing, correct?
Is there a way that you can move that, maybe over there, so that he can see it, unless you're moving? Okay, that's fine, thank you.
So we had a, we had a motion to open, close the business meeting. And a motion by Ed, to, I mean, a motion, a seconded by Ed. Then a motion by Al again to open the public meeting. And then seconded by Ed. So now we are, all those in favor to open the meeting?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, there we go, thank you. So I'm taking it, sir, you are here for the public hearing?
Yes, this is in butter.
You're just here to observe or announce? You have any comments that you would?
No.
Well, I guess we'll leave it to Nate, who's due a little bit of education than us two.
Sure. So we're here for preliminary, I think in July, and then we're here for a planning meeting for last month?
Yes.
I think it was last month.
Yes.
And we went through the checklist, and the only thing that was sound efficient was the financial letter that we got through there. And.
I think there was more than that.
Yeah, was DOT information?
Oh, I thought we, I thought we had agreed that that could be a condition of approval.
Okay, well, still there's. So you haven't talked to DOT yet?
No.
Okay, so we're still waiting for that, it's still under condition.
Yep. So as, you know, as we discussed, this is out on Route twenty-six, north side of town. It's the old drive-in theater, distracted by here, Lars Lane. What the Afghans proposing, that's a little drive-in. So it's supposed to be ten point six acres, mixed-use zone, so it's a perimeter by right. We are proposing a twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet of retail, little strip with various uses in it. And then two, or I should say twenty-four thousand of contractor buildings. So these would be leased out to contractors to store their tools and some materials and whatnot. They come in, they do their thing, and they head back out. And then we'd have your classic self-storage in the back, so I believe that is, I should say it on here. Thirty-six thousand square feet of self-storage. We'd be utilizing the existing driveway that services the, that served the old drive-in theater. And essentially, you know, use about probably two-thirds of the lot for the development. There is a coverage requirement, a lot coverage requirement of fifty percent, and we're just below that. We, as we discussed in the meeting last time, we'd be looking for relief on the required parking. Per your regulations, you can grant a thirty percent reduction if it's a mixed-use. So this is a mixed-use, and as I explained at the last meeting, the parking ratio for the retail is very conservative. And, you know, well more than what's needed, and we certainly don't need spaces that aren't going to be utilized. So everyone seemed to be, support that reduction of thirty percent in the parking. So one single access, you know, most of the retail is up front, and then the contractor should go around to the back, these two buildings. And then self-storage, which is very low intensity use, would be in the very rear. So as far as stormwater management, this does need a, you know, main state permit for stormwater management. That has not been initiated as of yet as well. But it's fairly straightforward, it's a sandy site, so we're trying to utilize those stands for infiltration. It's been designed to state standards, basically everything is, you know, coming down here, and then eventually getting back. We have a large shallow infiltration basin, these two are also infiltration basins, but the, you know, most of it gets the ultimate discharge point back here. And I guess it's very shallow, and basically just looks like a field back there. And infiltrate the stormwater back into the ground. And we, so we've reduced the discharge, we have two observation points, one in the back, and then one in the front. And we've reduced the stormwater discharge of both those locations in both volume and rate fairly significantly. Because we're just recharging it all back into the ground. Site basically has a bridge going down the middle, and sheds to either side, and then it's directed around to the back. Very basic, simple design for the stormwater drainage, open drainage, there's no catch bases or anything proposed. As far as the utilities, again, very, very simple. There is town water out there, so we'd be connecting to town water. And then this will be on septic, and, you know, we've targeted this area for a septic system. That would service both the contract, the contractor buildings and the residential, I'm sorry, the retail up front. And then obviously no service, the self-storage in the back. We'd be doing underground electric, and we are proposing a fire hydrant on site as well. So that's pretty much it as far as the utilities are, utilities go. We could supply a lighting plan. So this is, there's six pole lights out front in the retail portion to light this parking bay here. And then the other lights are building-mounted lights, and these are all shielded and downcast, so there'll be very little, these are all dark sky compliant lights. And basically, these back here are basically just security lights. So when you pull up the unit, you can actually see where you are, and what you're doing with it. Footprint of the light doesn't spread out that far. That's been, you know, central light designer, and the point, the point-by-point is on here, they're hard to read, but, you know. It's all zeros around the perimeter, which is what we're looking for.
So there is going to be lighting around all the back?
Yes.
Storage containers and everything?
Yes. Yep, security lights. We're not showing a fence on here, but there will be security cameras as well. I know there's some instances of, you know, some shady things going on sometimes in these places in the back. But it will be well-lit, and there will be security cameras that are, you know, they keep the tapes for about a month.
But would this whole, the whole storage area be fenced in, or just, just around maybe the outside, or not, or no fencing?
So right now, we're not showing any fencing, they, they kind of leave that as an option typically. So if there is nefarious activities going on back there, it might be gate, but we certainly can't gate the front part for the retail portion. So I'm not exactly sure how that would look. I guess you could put gates, you know, here and have it activated. You know, typically with the fencing, they have, you have a little kiosk coming, you punch your number in, and the gate opens up. I'm not showing it in here, but there will be security cameras for sure. This is landscaping plan, you know, showing some landscaping out front here, dress up the front. Really nothing in the rear, they are screening this dumpster pad a little bit. And I think that's pretty much it. So, you know, we do need the state permits, and we give them construction details, which is not really important, but construction. We do need, as we discussed last time, we do, we will need state, a driveway permit, and state site drainage permit. And as well as a septic, you know, we have to get a septic system approved. Really, they can't, you know, we're hoping to have that as conditional approval, so that, you know, he can't really get his financing until he has a site plan approved. And then once he gets that, then he can go ahead and, you know, go start the remainder of the permitting. So if there's any questions?
You mentioned the septic was in a, before also the large storage areas, are there going to be bathrooms in there?
So yeah, there'll probably, there'll be bathrooms in these contractor buildings, so they'll use.
So coming in, you have one car coming in, one car coming out, is that what it is?
Yeah, so this is, you know, two-way access. There's two-way access all the way around, you know, all these buildings. And then there's wider aisles here for, you know, on these contractor buildings, if, you know, pick up truck with a trailer or something like that. These are, you know, this is our standard design, twenty-four, twenty-five foot aisles, and emergency vehicles can circumvent this. It's wide enough for, you know, your largest fire truck to get through there. You know, we'll need a ladder truck for a storage unit, but they can't get through there. The retail's, you know, spec retail, so we don't know when to use our, obviously, like we talked about last time, a restaurant goes in there, it would impact the septic design. As far as the parking goes, I think the one for two fifty ratio that we typically use, we cover a restaurant as well. The restaurants go by seats, number of seats. You're not going to have a high, a high turnover restaurant in this location, I wouldn't think, it would be a small, like a diner.
You need a good restaurant.
Yeah, I notice not many of you are.
Should put one in. We don't need another dinah. Really.
So all we're doing tonight then is, since we opened up a public meeting, since if there's any comment from the public, I guess we need to let, ask them if they want any, have any questions to be presented? Or any more information, so we can close the public hearing?
You kind of talked to me about it a year ago, sorry.
Okay, so you just hear a bird more of an interest in?
Yeah.
May I have your name?
Scott Sessions.
Thank you.
So.
Great Scott.
Stop my name.
No comments from the public, we can close the public meeting, so we can have a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public meeting?
I'll second that.
Yeah, a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? So moved? So now we can open up the business meeting, or the planning board meeting. So I need a motion to, we're going to.
I think you just move, you can just move and do that, yeah.
Well, we're going to reopen the planning board meeting. So we did have one, two, three, four, five, six conditions that we mentioned, and we did talk about, I remember we called, talking about the parking lot reduction, thirty percent. And I don't think that's a problem, unless you guys have changed your minds on that, as we talked about other things.
I mean, you'd have to have some, you'd have to have some really big stores, or something going in there that's going to have that big of a turnaround, to need that kind of part.
Yeah.
Not saying it won't happen.
So you have the parking shown there now, that would be, be a, be acceptable to the state?
No, this plan currently does not meet the.
Does not meet the, okay.
So we're short, we're short maybe fifteen percent right now?
So you, so you don't need to, you don't need the full thirty percent, but fifteen percent would be, so.
Well, we'd like, you know, so we'd like to have some space back here, so we'd like to eliminate some of these, if possible, so we could have, you know.
That is delivering products.
Yep. So, you know, so what we have on our note here, what's totally, what's required by the regulations is two hundred and five spaces. So then if we apply the thirty, sorry, the technical, if we apply the thirty percent reduction, which would be seventy percent of two oh five, we'd get to one forty-four. And so we'd like to be around one fifty, one sixty. So what's shown here is one sixty-seven, actually, no, what's shown here, it says one sixty-seven, but it counted up to the meeting, it's one seventy-seven. Now ideally, I'd like to be around one fifty or one fifty-five, so that's about a twenty, twenty-five percent reduction.
So we talked about that, and I think we're okay with that. What's the town management has, anything to say about it?
No, that's, that should be fine.
We did, we did talk about a condition requesting a letter from N. D. O. T. on possible turning lane. We also discussed a condition, possible location of front view, and dimension of existing proposed signs. That you would have to come back for to get approval.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll handle the signs directly through the building department?
Did you have a standard sign, monument sign, I can send you a cut sheet on that? Typically, it's on plan, but I guess we make it on the plan this time.
We did make it a condition to, a site evaluators approved septic system design obtained and presented to the, to the town. We did make it a condition, we're going to talk about a condition on applicable state approvals and permits to include the stormwater. To be conditional approval, and other, other permits that are required. We did receive the cost evidence and financial capability, so that's, that's, that's here, we don't need that. The other one was mission on a traffic engineering study, or a letter by N. D. O. T. regarding above number twenty. And possible turning lanes, and maybe even a second, you know, entrance if they recommend one, or, you know, an entrance and an exit. Have you talked to DOT at all with the traffic control people?
No, I apologize, we have not.
This is very, very, that's, that's very concerning with this whole area. It's fifty miles an hour zone.
It actually may be in forty, I think it's in forty.
No, I'm pretty sure that's fifty.
It's in the middle of the fifty.
Yeah, they get, yeah.
That's right in the middle of fifty there.
And then it goes up and then back down again.
And for that narrow, what is that, that is not even twenty-five feet wide on that, that one access and entrance there?
That's a twenty-four foot entrance.
So it's acceptable for two vehicles at one time, but I don't know if that's really good for this kind of a thing, but I would think you need two entrances.
So we'll, you know, we'll talk, we'll start initially communication with DOT, and like we talked about last time, they're going to require a traffic study. So all these courses that really hinge on a traffic study.
So what, we're going to make that a condition of approval, I think.
I think that's pretty important.
Yeah.
Because the traffic is only getting worse.
Yes, and I drive down, and you.
We all drive down.
Every day, it's a daily thing. It's a all-daily thing for all of us in this town.
Certainly understood.
And.
It's usually pretty hard to get, the state can give you an entrance, they don't like giving you entrances. I don't know if they give them another one or not, you don't know.
Yeah, but that's got to either be wider then.
Yeah, yes.
Or I would, you know, you maybe have two coming out, so you want to go left and one to go right. Right now, it's only one going out, and that's it, no left or right. And maybe even, I'm thinking a turn, you know, you need a turnout lane so people can go around people that. If that gets anywhere near as busy as it should get, if it's that kind of, if somebody's invested in that kind of investment, they're gonna want people showing up there.
Right.
And, uh, that's gonna create a lot of traffic. And I'm not sure what, um, what do they call that? How many cars per day?
Yeah, like traffic study, yeah.
Well, no, how many cars a day?
Yeah.
Actually comes into that particular group. The kind of development there.
So trip generation.
Trip, trip.
So it's based on the retail, the retail will drive it, the self-storage portion is very low trip, very low trip generator. And then the contractor building.
Yeah, I'm not so much worried about that part, I'm worried about the retail.
Yeah. No, I understood.
With the retail and then the size of that, you know, the entrance coming in and out, you know, and you're talking to contractors. We all know, they all carry trailers and bigger trucks and everything else, they're gonna be turning in and out there. If you've got a little entrance, they're not gonna fit, so.
Understood, so, you know, obviously that's gonna take a couple of parking spaces to make that wider. But we got a little bit of cushion now, so we can certainly treat that up and get it.
Yep.
Would you make entries just for the contractors, either above it or below it, or both sides? Plus the, uh, one in?
I think we need a study. I think we need the, the, the D O T's recommendations.
Commentary from D O T directly would probably be the best.
Okay. Right now, it's, I'm not one, and, uh.
I don't think D O T's gonna allow two cuts.
Yeah.
Typically don't.
Yeah.
They typically don't, but in this case, I mean, they, I don't know, how did, how did, uh, how did Urban get it, get two cuts? How did, uh, how did Tractor Supply get two cuts?
They do have three.
Urban's got three.
Yeah, they don't.
Three.
Really?
Yeah, so how's they getting it, so I don't know if I necessarily agree with that.
So one has two.
So did Tractor Supply have to do anything, uh, turning lanes?
No, they didn't, but we're getting more and more, so much more business on that strip. That, uh, and, and, and when, and people stop turning to deck, holds up a lot of congestion right there. Creates a lot of congestion waiting for, for people to get a chance to cross over into the, into their going nor, going south.
North.
So, uh, we've all been stuck here. Rupers is a terrible one.
Yeah.
But that really is not nothing to do with this, but it's, that should, that should have had a turning lane there.
That's not the line that this is gonna have.
Yeah.
Rupers is gonna, not less than this.
Well, I don't know, I mean, Rupers is.
Well, Rupers is pretty good.
If you, if you can imagine what Rupers is getting, this is, and you wanna triple that to this.
Yeah.
Then we got, you know.
We got problems. Yeah. I've been hit twice going to work since eighty-five to my place.
My wife's been hit.
One, one time I got sent to the river of cracks.
Ooh, wow. My wife got hit coming out of Tractor Supply one time. And it, the, the, um, it wasn't her fault at all. They were actually, um, turning into it and hit her, she was still parked. She was trying to come out. And, uh, tractor trailer tried to turn in and hit her, the rear end. I mean, it turned in, it was turning into the Tractor Supply, but couldn't make the swings right there. Anyways, um, so I guess we got an understanding of six, one, two, three, four, five, uh, five conditions. Cause one of them has been, um, we've already accepted, uh, we, we do have the financial capacity commitment letter.
Can you mean those five for the record real quick this week?
Uh, well, it's on, on the, on the minutes, it's number twenty. Uh, is that good enough or do you want me to read them too? I, I did go right down that list.
She's shaking her head to, in, in approval, so yet not.
Number twenty, number thirty, number thirty-eight, uh, number forty-four, uh, and number fifty-six. Fifty-five is the one that was been cut, it's already been.
It's the financial, yeah.
So.
He's, he's gonna send me the sign and ultimately that's gonna be something that I'll have for the full story on, so we can probably eliminate that one too.
Go and eliminate that, the location of front view and dimensions of existing post signs?
Did you all see the renderings that he sent as well? I think we have the.
I did.
Yeah, these are the ones that are right here.
Yeah, oh, wow, that's black and white.
Yeah.
It's, it's not as good as your fancy color one you got.
I just looked it in online.
There we go.
It's beautiful.
Yeah. If you wanna pass that around and let Scott see it too.
It was sent to me in your emails as well.
Yeah, it was in the email, I, I looked, I went through all of them.
Oh, it likes the color one better.
It's really nice, I mean, I, I really wanna see this happen, without, but it definitely needs something.
So I have number twenty and number fifty-six as just requesting a letter from D O T regarding turning lanes. Are you amending that or changing that?
A traffic, fifty-six is a traffic engineering study with data or, and then the letter request, requesting regarding.
Number twenty.
So pretty much fifty-six and twenty are.
Yeah, so we need basically.
We can condense that into one, just straight up.
I, I would say something, yeah.
Just say a D O T permit?
Uh, I'd say more than just permit, but I think specify the traffic study and commentary on the possible turning lane.
I wanna make a decision based on what they come up with, because if they say that's fine, I don't know if I have a, I have a problem with that. I really don't. I don't think it is fine, I think it needs to be either wider, much wider. Or I'm hoping D O T's gonna say the same thing, which I, I'm hoping that they have enough common sense to do that. And I'm hoping, or even better, to allow two. Don't, don't put it right there.
One on each end.
One toward the each end, not, I don't know if you have the exact ends, but somewhere in there. And, uh, and even a, a pull-out lane, a pull-around lane.
I just noticed two thirty-eight reference the subsurface and the stormwater. Those are two separate things that, um, involve two different realms, so.
Yep.
Subsurface, that's.
Well, that's still part of the, um, state approvals, stormwater man, stormwater permit.
Yeah.
So, um, they both fall under the same umbrella?
Yeah, with thirty-eight, yeah, okay.
It should, it should have been thirty-eight, should have been, I mean, that second part of thirty-eight should have been more incorporated in number forty-four.
Oh, yeah, thirty-eight doesn't, that's, that's strictly the, uh, the, uh, the disposal of the sewage. So where was the sub, the D E P sub, uh, drainage?
The storm, well, right at, in thirty-eight is the second part.
Oh, no, I'm saying in the site plan, cause that.
Well, well, state applicable, uh, state approval and permits, that should have been in that number forty-four is what I'm saying. Stormwater is part of that. So right, so right here, state approvals.
Yeah, so forty-four really should be stormwater.
And storm, you know, to include.
And then thirty-eight is strictly subsurface, so, okay.
But it's, it's.
And really, that state approval is really D O T. But, but as far as the numbers you referenced, that's stormwater. Thirty-eight is subsurface, uh, site evaluation. D O T, number twenty and fifty-six. We're trying to combine them, I'm just trying to limit the.
Twenty and fifty-six pretty much would fall under the same study, I would think. D O T.
Hello? And fifty-six is, yeah, I think twenty is more local and state, and fifty-six looks like it's, uh, a traffic engineering study, that's the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So we're down to four, does that sound about right?
Yep.
Which number?
We have twenty, thirty-eight, forty-four, fifty-six. And I believe all of those can be conditions of approval, or you wanna wait, um, whatever D O T is gonna say.
I can, we can make them conditions of approvals, but.
Okay, so the plan weren't advanced until those were met?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Right, nothing's getting signed until we see what the D O T and, uh, and the site evaluation stuff comes into our, into our hands. So, um, so we need a motion for, um, uh, D O T driveway entrance permits. Uh, in, uh, to, to include, and also for the main department of health services licensed site evaluator, um, design. And, um, um, location of sub-sub, subsurface wastewater disposal. Applic, um, also, uh, applicable state approvals and permits to include stormwater management. And other state required permits that we may need, or they, they, they actually may require for this project when it's submitted. Um, and a traffic engineering study data, uh, over the, um, um, possible, whatever they make recommendations on that particular site for access in, ingress and egress. Um, of the, on to state route twenty-six. That's still Main Street.
Yes, it is.
I think it is still Main Street.
Hey, dude.
So, if anyone wants to make a motion, you can also do say, I made that motion I just said.
I made that, the everything you just said.
I was just thinking the same thing, I'm like, there's no way I'm gonna remember everything you just said. I'll, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? No further discussion? So, you approve or not? So we passed the, the, uh, the application, um, under those four conditions.
Yes.
And hopefully we can have some solution on D O T's recommendations.
Yes. So thank you very much, and we'll, uh, get that stuff started and, uh, give you an update as soon as we get one. And I'll give you that detail.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Coming out.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Where'd you drive from?
Milford, New Hampshire.
There we go.
That's nothing.
My daughter lives in, uh, Fayette, so we're headed up there.
Oh, nice.
If you didn't have a place you can go eat. I've been mind off the waiver.
I'll make that.
Wait, wait.
No, 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 the, the waiver for thirty percent, did we have that, specify that, that we didn't, you didn't waive it?
Okay, so, uh, we need a motion to waive the thirty percent parking spaces.
Or, uh.
Required.
Down thirty percent, that's what it is, you're waiving, you're waiving.
No more than thirty percent.
Thirty percent reduction now.
Yes, there you go.
No more than thirty percent reduction for the parking.
To accept the thirty percent reduction in parking space?
Second.
Got a second by Al?
Yeah.
Although, um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
In favor.
So moved.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank her.
Thank you, that's why, somebody's gonna ask, somebody's gonna be on. That's right.
Indeed, someone knows what's going on, come on out.
I'd like to admit it.
Yeah, now we can make a motion to close the, uh, the.
Uh, do you want open for public comment or at the end?
Oh, do we have, oh, yeah, we can, yeah, do we have a public comment on the thing? Coming a little late.
Yeah, I'm just a little butter, so I figured I'd come see what was going on and.
Yeah.
Is there exterior fencing on the property or?
Not as of yet, no.
I know a lot of storage areas have it.
They typically do, I don't know if it's because of the retail component of this or what the deal is, you know. There will be video surveillance, and if they run into issues, I'm imagining they put it up.
I'm putting it up. I'm putting it up.
Yeah? Yeah, running some troubles?
Yeah. Too many druggies around.
That's what I heard, they're like doing drug get back to us all.
They will find any.
All, all these places, I don't know, all the other places probably got problems though.
Did you have any other questions for?
I don't think so, maybe, sorry I was late, but it dawned on me in the early evening tonight.
Well, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful.
There is a, um, thing for you over here that you can take home and you can see it from agenda. And attached to the agenda is the.
We can pass it back over.
It's colored, you can print your own if you got the email.
I got the email, so, yeah.
That's a lot of ink.
That was a lot of ink for.
It's on the email, it's not going anywhere, I can look at it if I want.
Basically, the ink card. Ink is god awful. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor? So moved.
They have a media copy. All right, so one, you have to print it, so I need to print it.
Sure.
She has to put it up here, cause you don't have that. Just come. We're gonna put it down.
We work for you.
Sid. Sid.
He did a good job.
I mean, he didn't look.
He started coming back here, that was nice.
Yeah, yeah.